Calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting for open session, El Segundo City Council. And we are conducting this evening's meeting in a virtual setting. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations. And Deputy City Clerk Mona Schilling is in chamber to accommodate public communications. Members of the public may view and listen to this meeting live this evening on Spectrum Channel 3 and 22, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and El Segundo TV at YouTube.com. Please remember to mute your mics when not speaking and council members if making a motion or making a second done a motion, please do so using your last name in order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. All right, and with that, we're going to have the invocation led by City Clerk Tracy Weaver, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Drew. Madam Clerk.
All right, Heavenly Father, as we meet here tonight, we ask your divine assistance in conducting the affairs of this community. Please grant the leaders of our community the insight and courage to serve the citizens of El Segundo. Guide our elected officials in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring the continued growth and prosperity for El Segundo. Amen.
Okay, Councilor Drew?
All right, everybody rise and face a flag at some point or point in the city and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry rookie, rookie move there, roll call Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Present.
Councilmember Nicole?
Here.
Councilmember Persat? Here. Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Here.
And Mayor Boils?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mitnick, we have a special presentation this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A special opportunity here, we're going to recognize Meredith Pettit, our Recreation and Parks Director. Before we do that, can you see my face covering?
It's very nice.
Reading by example, one of a kind, wearing is carrying. We're here to promote the face covers. Council, I have Meredith Pettit here. This is a, one of those moments where we have mixed feelings. On the one hand, we're excited for the opportunity for Meredith, our tenured Rec and Park Director. She will be leaving the city to take a similar job in Corvallis, Oregon. A little bit north of us, a university town, I can't remember the name of the university there. Oregon State University, The Beavers. So she will be going up there, her last day will be next week. And to say thank you to her, normally the council will be up here. You'd have all of your department heads and your employees here to show support. We're doing so virtually. So I have a few things to hand over to Meredith. Again, normally the mayor would be right here with you and show you this really nice plaque that has the city logo, just like the one here on my face cover. And it says, "To Meredith Pettit, for your years of service, August 9th, 2010 through September 11th, 2020." I can't shake your hand, I can't give you a hug, but I can hand that over to you. So in addition to that, we have a bag of goodies with mementos from El Segundo so you don't forget where you came from. You probably did not know this, but we had a really cool City of El Segundo beach towel. And it'll be like unlike any beach towel you'll see in all of Oregon. And we have some other mementos, a coffee mug and things like that, and a very sentimental special card from the executive team. All right, so you're going to be missed. And council, if you don't mind, if you would like to say a couple words, if you're so inclined, you have that opportunity, and then Meredith might say something. With that, I'll steal into my dugout seat.
Well, I'll start. Meredith, thank you for everything. I've had the privilege to work with you pretty closely on the Aquatic Center, as you took on that incredible new facility and brought that thing to life through all the different iterations of design and negotiations between the school district, the city, and getting the clubs in there and everything else that you've done. And congratulations, I think this is a huge opportunity for you and we're going to miss you. So thank you for everything you've done. I look forward to seeing, I'm sure our paths will cross again, I look forward to seeing you again. I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
So Meredith, thank you very, thank you for all your service. And as, as Mayor, the mayor mentioned, I worked with you on the Aquatic Center and you put many hours in, extra hours in to ensure that we got the best and the first-class aquatic center. So thank you very much. And I know you did a lot of work with the whole Topgolf negotiation and just in keeping our parks and recs open and ensuring that we have programming to help and encourage everyone to work and play at, in El Segundo. So thank you very much. And you, we can't thank you enough for all the service, years of service you gave us.
Thank you, Carol. Councilor Drew?
Yes, Mayor, we have worked together in a couple of my previous stops as Little League and Girl Softball President. I may have fractured a protocol or two during that time. So we have definitely talked and worked together and some things I could say is you're very efficient. You're very professional in the way you do things. And in the short time that I've been on council, you get things done and that will always serve you well in life and Corvallis is going to be lucky to have you. So good luck.
Thank you, Lance. Councilmember Nicole?
Meredith, I just want to wish you well. You know, I think, I don't think any other director of Recreation and Parks can say that they've seen more changes at Rec Park over a 10-year span than you. Your staff has always thought very highly of you. In our personal interactions, it's always been wonderful. And I wish you and your family all the best.
Thank you, Scott. And Mayor Protem?
Meredith, very few places will ask you to understand how to run a TV station, a public pool, a golf course, about 70,000 different children's youth leagues, playgrounds, and then make sure you know exactly what the chemistry is in the weed killers. Your ability to handle the incredibly emotive elements of parents with their children interacting with parks and all the things that El Segundo does with it speaks highly of your professionalism, your patience and your demeanor. And I trust it will serve you well with all of the very sane people in Oregon. So all the best and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Meredith?
Well, thank you all for the kind words. It has been, actually this 10 years has really flown by. And El Segundo has provided me a lot of opportunity to learn and grow in my profession. And I've just really enjoyed working here. Want to thank all of the elected officials, all of the staff here in the organization, all of the community members that I've met. I know that, you know, the day that I was able to walk down grand and wave at people driving by and that's really, really felt part of this community and I'm really going to miss it. So special thanks to the Rec and Park staff, definitely. And I looked up some quotes by probably the most well-known Parks and Rec professional, Leslie Nope. And she says, "No one achieves anything alone," and that's really true. And I just want to thank my staff for all the support along the way.
Awesome. Well said. Thank you, Meredith. All right. Thanks, Mr. Mitnick. All right, Madam Clerk, now is the time and place for public communication. Is there anyone in chamber wishing to speak?
No, there's no one in chamber this evening to speak.
Okay, thank you. I know we have quite a bit of written public comments, Madam Clerk. Do you want to outline those for us, please?
Yes, this evening you have 24. They're very, very short, pretty much. So I can go ahead and read them if you would like.
Yes, please. If it sounds to much trouble, that'd be great.
Hold on, I'm trying to mute some people. All right, we're set. All right, I will begin. You guys, I'm not sure where that noise is coming from because I've muted everybody. But, "Good afternoon. My name is Nat O'Brien and I was raised, I was raised and am a current resident of El Segundo. A video surfaced of a woman on the strand who wrongfully called police on black women who were jogging. I call on you to please denounce the woman in question, to show your black residents and residents of color that El Segundo will not put up with this behavior. Thank you for your time. Best, Nat O'Brien. As I am sure you are well, a woman accosted in a racist rant, three black women who were jogging on our beach this weekend. I fully expect and hope that the City Council will denounce these actions, making clear that this type of racist behavior is not welcome in El Segundo, and seek to fully prosecute this woman for submitting a false police report. Please make a very firm public statement against this atrocious behavior. I would also repeat my earlier request for the city to post a strong anti-race and anti-discrimination statement on the website and all public communications to make it very clear that our city will not stand for any behavior that violates the rights and dignity of its residents, visitors, students, parents, business owners, or patrons. Thank you, Erin Workman. Dear Council, by now I am sure you have seen the horrific video of an unidentified woman and her shocking racial attack on three women that took place on our beloved El Segundo Beach. I am outraged that such a sacred place for my family and all El Segundo residents was desecrated by this heinous act. I am asking the City Council of El Segundo to take a stand and denounce this unacceptable act of racism that took place in our home. We are better than this and we cannot sit in silence or look the other way. Your voices represent our voices and we need you to speak for us. Racism will not be tolerated in El Segundo. Please denounce this woman and her act of racial terror. The Wheelers. To whom it may concern, my name is Catherine. I recently viewed an extremely disturbing video of a woman in El Segundo who was berating a black member of our community with insults and racial slurs. This is unacceptable and intolerable. I am asking the City of El Segundo, my representatives, to fully and explicitly condemn racist behavior of any kind. Please send the clear message that racists are not welcome in El Segundo. Please explicitly confirm that black lives matter. Thank you, Catherine. Dear City Council, as a concerned citizen and voter, I appeal to you to denounce racist attacks filled with hate, such as the one that happened this past weekend down on our beautiful beach. You've probably been informed by now that three African women jogging were verbally attacked and threatened. We must not tolerate this hateful behavior in our city. I look forward to you as our leaders and conscious, and conscious to publicly denounce this display of racism and hate. Sincerely, Kat Oshlinnager. Hello, I am emailing so City Council can make a statement on the racist Karen at the beach and make the decision to be anti-racist. The council should move to condemn racism and provide resources for folks who have experienced racist attacks. A forum for people of color to speak on their experience with racism in El Segundo would be helpful. Andrea Sanchez. I recently saw a video of a woman being recorded on El Segundo Beach shouting racial slurs at a woman recording her. I do not know what prompted the woman to record or what prompted the woman to shout, "I need a paramedic. I need an ambulance. My environment is being harmed by this African black person." But what I do know is that there were no visible signs of physical harm to the woman and there's no justification for speaking to another human in such an inhumane, disgusting way. In the light of the recent protests and events across the country and across the world, to see this coming from my hometown was shameful. I think it only right to identify this woman and educate her to the best of our abilities. I know our town is better than this. Please take action on this horrific situation. Thank you, Hannah Cheetchet. I am a mother of school-aged children and an El Segundo conservative. Our group is composed of patriots who love our country and all people in it, regardless of color, gender, class, or sexual orientation. We denounce the anti-LGBTQ agenda of mass resistance. Our school district superintendent is promoting BLM propaganda. This is a group that wants to defund and dismantle police and is against the nuclear family. They're led by admitted trained Marxists. If you have the recommended readings include Why Teaching Black Lives Matters, Matter Matters, and 75 Things White People Can Do For Social Justice. You think COVID has emptied our schools? This is going to create an exodus you cannot imagine. Make it stop. And these are all anonymous. I am an El Segundo conservative homeowner with a family concerned about what we are seeing happening to the great city. We are watching as a small group, fighting hate with hate, racism with racism, and law and order with aggressive disobedience. We live in a town that is peaceful and inclusive. We live here because we feel safe. A small group is calling to defund our police. They are calling on community members to videotape encounters and entrap them for doing their job. They are trying to create more problems so that they can support their baseless claims of racism against our LEOs and our city. We back the blue, so should you. Signed, Concerned ES Home and Business Owner. Mayor Boils and Council. When our grad, when our kids graduated, we could not gather in Library Park to watch them. Four months, playgrounds have been closed. Our concerts in the park were canceled this year. Yet, the ES BLM has organized a paid concert, $20 per person event, in Library Park this weekend. This is not a protest. They are not a charity. Either shut this down or open everything. Enough is enough. Sincerely, ES Conservatives. I am an El Segundo conservative. All lives matter. White people are not a one-dimensional, undifferentiated mass of privilege and wealth. Minorities are not powerless victims oppressed by a society ingrained in racial bigotry. Perpetuating these ideas serving to foster oppression while instilling increasing division, resentment, and unearned entitlements. Education, not indoctrination. Unification, not division. Security, not endangerment. Promotion, not repression. Relate, no hate. Stop entertaining these fringe unjustified demands that bring El Segundo, and bring El Segundo to heel. Joseph H. I am an El Segundo conservative parent with a middle school child. I want to ensure the committee, community we love understands who we are. Therefore, I believe it is important to state the following. I wish to denounce any hate groups that seek to divide communities down racial lines or expose hate against any ethnic or social group. I oppose and reject the anti-LGBTQ agenda of mass resistance. I oppose and reject the anti-family, anti-police, and divisive, diverse, divisive agenda of the BLM organization. I reject the racially charged propaganda our own school district is promoting. There is no cause nor justification for any of this in our great city. Respectfully, R. H. I am an El Segundo conservative. Believe all lives matter, that racism and hate have no place in our society. I expect the City Council to serve the greater good, not be an enabler of social justice dogma that perpetuates division. I have been unable to substantiate through significant research any justification or reason that our city has been targeted by a group exposing, expousing BLM propaganda and making demands on our city, police, and schools. We will not stand by and watch as you promote, support, and enable this garbage. You have a duty to serve the community as a whole. Do your jobs. Don't bow to the mob. Respectfully, Mike J. We are El Segundo conservatives. We all denounce the anti-LGBTQ rhetoric and agenda of mass resistance. We wholly oppose the demands levied upon the police department and the school district by El Segundo for Black Lives. A BLM-derived opportunistic group demanding bias under the guise of social justice. We expect you, the ES City Council, to stop entertaining these fringe unjustified demands and bring El Segundo to heel. Respectfully, ESC members. I am an El Segundo conservative and parent of school-aged children. I oppose BLM propaganda promoted by the ESUST superintendent, which suggests white people address their fragility and promotes donating to BLM, which directly funds Act Blue, who primarily supports the DNC, amongst several other objectionable organizations. We expect our schools to be unbiased. We expect that all students be treated fairly. Marginalizing students of any color, class, or creed is a step in the wrong direction and it will not be tolerated. Respectfully, Karen. We live on the east side of town. We are concerned about increasing suspicious activities near the hotels along PCH. We are noticing the following. Vehicles seemingly casing neighborhoods, washing, watching in park cars during morning and evening hours. Loitering in nearby parks, which are close to our kids. And more and more neighbors falling victim to theft. The crime in our once peaceful town needs to be addressed swiftly. What happened to neighborhood patrols? Please address this matter and inform the community as how you plan to restore order. Council, my niece, who is six years old, asked me the other day, "Auntie, how come the dog park is open and the dogs can play with their dog and human friends, but I cannot go to the park and play in the jungle gym? The skate park is open, but I don't skate. I miss the slides and swings and I miss the monkey bars the most. It makes me really sad that I can't play at the park. School started and I didn't get to play at the park all summer." Mayor Boils, can we please get the recreation parks fully opened with obvious safety measures in place? These kids need to get out and play. How do you explain to a six-year-old that dogs and skaters can go to their park, but you can't go to yours and play? Sincerely, C. Johnson. As an El Segundo resident, I was ending the impression that our city was not allowing any gatherings, including any type of concerts at Library Park. I now see you are allowing a BLM drum circle, which is indeed a concert at the same park you have prohibited residents from enjoying since spring. Not only are you allowing it, but you seem to be fine with the fact that they're selling tickets on Eventbrite promoting it. If this carries forward, I'm going to assume we can now have concerts, even with just one musician, with social distancing and masks required. If we can't, then please explain why. Thank you, Melissa Pearson. As an El Segundo resident, I was ending the impression that our city was not allowing, eh, same one, sorry guys. I am both sickened and angered by the LA Sheriff's Department murder of Dijon Keasy yesterday, right down the street from us. This on the heels of their murder of 18-year-old Andreas Gallardo in Gardena. You should be too. It is just luck that these tragedies did not happen here. You know that non-black people in this community call the cops on black joggers, black residents, and black visitors and face no consequences for filing these vice police reports. It is just a matter of time before one of these incidents turns deadly. Unless you make a change, we need civilian oversight and policies that prevent racist policing. These changes are within your power to create. If you ignore these common sense solutions and claim you are powerless to prevent senseless, state-sponsored murder like this in our community, you are not the right leaders for this time. Thank you, Anya Goldstein, resident homeowner and small business owner. Four more guys. Dear Council, my name is John Pickaver. I wanted to thank Mayor Boils and the city for acting swiftly to denounce the incident in which a woman hurled racist patrol at three black joggers in front of the parking lot for El Segundo Beach in a now-viral video. Also, I appreciate the fact that you took the opportunity to make clear that racism has no place in El Segundo. This is especially important since the hateful woman on camera has many defenders across the El Segundo Facebook groups. The City of El Segundo must do more by demanding a thorough investigation and prosecution of the woman on camera to the fullest extent of the law. I understand this happened 30 yards outside of El Segundo, but you must not let a jurisdictional technicality rob you of your platform of influence to persuade the pertinent officials to seek appropriate charges. I am an El Segundo conservative. It is apparent you are using city resources, allocating both money and time to placate the demands of the group called El Segundo for Black Lives. Having hired a biased consultant to defer responsibility to an outsider for the DEI committee selection at a cost to taxpayers of $10,000 is outrageous. While most who follow ES4BL do so thinking they are doing something positive, the ideal, the ideologic, you know what I'm trying to say, behind this movement does nothing but weaken communities and cause division. There is a, there is a naive delusion that these demands will bring social justice, but the demands are both antisocial and unjustified. Stop doing what is expedient and politically correct and start doing what is needed and warranted. Serve the community, not the mob. Sincerely, JB. Dear Mayor and Council members, I write as a resident and a parent to ask that you take affirmative and direct action to make El Segundo a safe and welcoming environment for all who live, study, work, or visit here. Three women were jogging right near the El Segundo Beach when a woman made racial slurs against them and then called the police, falsely claiming to have been assaulted and to require emergency aid. I appreciated the city and the mayor's statements denouncing this woman's behavior. I ask that you take the next step. Please write to the City of Los Angeles District Attorney and/or City Attorney and request that this matter be thoroughly investigated and the perpetrator be punished to the full extent of the law. If we want to start, stop racists from weaponizing the police against black people, we need to start prosecuting and punishing this kind of behavior. Thank you, Amanda Touchton. And here's our last one. I am sure that the council has become aware of the awful racist incident that happened on the beach a few days ago where three black women who were jogging became the victims of a racial, racist verbal attack. Regardless of the technicality of whether it was El Segundo Beach or a stone throw away, what I'd like to point out is that these incidents are on the rise across the nation. This is not an isolated or uncommon event. We have seen this year especially many examples of people making false calls to the police in an attempt to weaponize armed forces against black people. This is a crime and should be taken seriously and before we have an innocent person killed because of someone else's racism. We should take measures in El Segundo to deter people from calling the police without valid cause and not only to avoid the waste of time, resource, and money, but also prevent the loss of life. Tanya, El Segundo resident and parent. And that's it.
First off, Madam Clerk, thank you so much for reading all those in their entirety. Really appreciate it.
A little tongue tied.
No, it was a great job. Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Scott. There are several themes there. Mr. Mitnick, do you want to address any of those?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, there were quite a few cards there and I noted a few themes. First off, on public safety concerns, if any resident ever feels insecure or has concerns, we strongly encourage them to contact the police department and not to hesitate to dial 911. There was one, maybe two in there. I'll follow up with the city clerk to get the contact information and make sure our police chief follows up, or a representative of the police chief's office follows up with him so we can have a personal touch and look into those issues. With respect to park access, we understand, share, and share the concerns that residents have about access to the parks. We encourage our residents to keep an eye on the city's website or social media pages to get the very latest. We are opening up parks and rec facilities to the fullest extent that the law will allow and that we're able to comply with the county's administrative orders. Just, just to be clear on that, that point, it's not a City of El Segundo decision. It's compliance with the county order. So there's, there'll be more information on our website and if people are unclear about what's open or not open, just call us. Call the city manager's office, call Rec and Park and we'll help you understand that. On the reference was made to a planned protest demonstration this weekend, Saturday at Library Park. That is true. There is one planned. Again, to be clear, whatever protests take place, they have to comply with the county's administrative order. And the city is, our police department and our office, city manager's office, we are working with that group to make sure they comply with the county's order or orders. That's really about it, council. But I'd like to just reiterate on behalf of a city council, they've taken a number of steps to state the city's perspective and view on racism. Simply not tolerated. A diversity, equity, and inclusion committee is in the process of being formed. Council's given direction. We'll have an update on that topic later in the agenda, but the city is on record stating its views and perspective on racism. It's just not tolerated. I think that's about it, Mr. Mayor. If I missed something, I'm happy to. Um, I think that's about it, Mr. Mayor. If I missed something, I'm happy to um, follow up and provide clarity. Thank you.
Looks like you covered my list. Um, all right, next up, we have special presentations. We have a proclamation. September twenty twenty is prostate cancer awareness month. And normally we present these proclamations in chambers somebody would receive. Uh, but in this case, I'll read it. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in men. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be one hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred thirty new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in twenty twenty. Resulting in an estimated thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty deaths. And whereas it is estimated twenty thousand one hundred and sixty men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year. And it is estimated three thousand eight hundred and ninety Californian men will do that will die from this disease, will die from this disease, excuse me, this year. And whereas black men in the USA and Caribbean have the highest documented prostate cancer incidence in the world. And whereas early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms and studies suggest strong familial predisposition. Maybe responsible five for five to ten percent of the disease disease cases. And whereas late-stage prostate cancer commonly spreads to the bones, which can cause pain in the hips, spine. Ribs or other areas in the body. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches one hundred percent. When prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to thirty-one percent when it spreads to the other parts of the body. And whereas the rapid reduction in prostate cancer mortality is attributed to early detection. Through PSA testing and advancement and treatment. Whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men should have an opportunity to make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer. Based on their personal values and preferences. And whereas the city of El Segundo joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men. To make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council, the city of El Segundo, California hereby hereby proclaim. The month of September twenty twenty as prostate cancer awareness month in El Segundo. And it's signed by all of us, so thank you for that. Highly encourage getting those PSA tests and screening. Gentlemen, especially I think as you surpass forty, it becomes even more critical. I think that's a number. Okay, Chief Donovan, COVID nineteen update, please, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, this evening I have a short slide deck I'd like to present. Uh, I'll go over the current health metrics. I'd like to talk about the governor's new blueprint for a safer economy, which changes the health metrics of opening up the county. And then some local updates. Uh, so if you'll allow me to uh, quickly show share my screen. I'm hoping that you see my screen.
No, yeah, sir.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm trying to get better at this. Okay, here I'll have there. How about that?
It's loaded.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Apologies for that technical delay. Uh, the the numbers today, this was as of today at uh, uh, three o'clock. The numbers in the United States, California, LA County are um, in a very good trajectory. They're going down substantially. And quite frankly, this is the lowest number of new cases and deaths that I've seen in the United States and California. In a a long time. And so although of course, the the new cases and the deaths particularly. Um, are are certainly tragic. Uh, the trajectory of these numbers is certainly. Uh, looking favorable and it demonstrates that. Uh, a couple of things, the people that are being impacted by this disease are able to be treated and are recovering. Uh, the death rates are going down and I would imagine that. Our uh, our our steps locally here and in California and Los Angeles County. For social separation, wearing a face masks, uh, face coverings is effective. And so I want to applaud the the community for their efforts to uh, uh, take uh, interest in helping flatten the curve. I'll talk briefly about the blueprint for safer economy. Uh, on August twenty eighth, Governor Gavin Newsom announced a new risk-based uh, framework. By which the California Department of Public Health will determine what activities are permitted in counties throughout the state. Uh, again, this is called the blueprint print for safer economy. At our last council meeting, I talked about the four health metrics that the county of Los Angeles uh, was reporting to the state. Uh, we were on the uh, state's watch list. We were paying close attention to those uh, four metrics. The governor has now changed that to two metrics. And those two health metrics um, are new cases per one hundred thousand and test positivity. Um, and in the past, the four health metrics were using a seven-day uh, rolling curve. This new process will use a fourteen-day process. It's a seven-day look back. So on the Tuesday of each week, effective September eighth, uh, the state will look at the county's. Health metrics going back one week. And if the health metrics are in a favorable position. Um, to go from tier one to tier two, uh, they'll then monitor those for the next two weeks going forward. And so in essence, in three weeks period, if the health metrics continue to hold. Uh, the county of Los Angeles could move from one tier to the other. This is a new uh, color-coded, four-tiered framework. Uh, for evaluating the relative risk of community transmission to COVID nineteen. Uh, some important things to remember about these um, new coded tiers. Uh, this California Department of Public Health will provide general rules concerning the operation of the blueprint. And the movement of counties between tiers. Uh, there are five important distinctions to remember here. The state will assess indicators weekly. It will provide updates every Tuesday starting on September eighth, uh, concerning its weekly assessment. Number two, a county will remain in a tier for a minimum of three weeks before advancing to the next tier. A number three, a county may only move forward one tier at a time. So it'll be three tier, uh, three weeks at minimum before moving, assuming that the health metrics um, are favorable. Uh, number four, if a county's case rate and test positivity measures. Uh, far fall into two different tiers. So if, for instance, the new cases are above. The threshold, but the test positivity is below, we'd have uh, metrics in two different um, categories. Then the county would be assigned to the more restrictive tier. And lastly, a city's local health jurisdiction data will be incorporated into the county's overall metrics. And as such, cities will be assigned to the same tier as the county where the city is located. So even if our local uh, numbers uh, were substantially lower than the counties. Uh, we are grouped with the county uh, going forward. And so you see here, there's a uh, four tiers, all color-coordinated. Uh, we'll follow uh, these two health metrics uh, moving forward and report on these on a um. On a more regular basis. This is the current status. Los Angeles County is currently at thirteen point one. On the new uh, positive cases per one hundred thousand. Our test positivity is at five percent. I think that if we see these uh, new cases continuing to decline. That top metric of thirteen-one will continue to decline. We're looking at to looking at that to be below uh, at or below seven. And we would uh, with that metric, uh, be eligible to move uh, to a tier two from tier one. Uh, this gives you a broad stroke of uh, the four. Um, tiers on the color-coordinated effort. And each one of these county risk levels. Has a corresponding list of activities um, that can be allowed. And what we'll do is we'll look to post the updated information to the website and make this available to the community. It gives a detail in terms of the types of businesses that are allowed to remain open um, in each of the four color-coordinated uh, spectrums. Again, right now, we're in a tier one, which is considered to be a widespread county risk level, uh, working uh, towards getting to the tier two. Um, this is a change and it's new, uh, but the one thing that is really important and and no longer part of the health metrics. But I think is a really important uh, uh, indicator is the number of hospitalizations. A steep decline in the number of hospitalizations from um. Geez, uh, six weeks ago, we were at a high of about twenty-four hundred people in the hospital. And as of today, we had just over a thousand, a thousand and fifty-seven people that were hospitalized. And so this is all a very favorable health metric moving forward that uh, will hopefully move the county of Los Angeles. Uh, to tier two. Uh, a couple of quick updates uh, that are happening locally with the incident management team. Today, we start our mental health awareness campaign. Uh, be kind to your mind. Uh, the chief of police, Chief Wellen, did an outstanding introductory video uh, that is up on the uh, social media platforms now. And uh, in these corresponding dates, we'll be releasing additional videos that will be available for our community members. Uh, our employees and those um, folks that are going through town that happen to come to our our website. Uh, our wearing is carrying face campaign was successful, uh, although we'll continue to push out uh, the information. Uh, we're transitioning from that campaign to the health uh, mental health awareness campaign. It's worth noting that we distributed over a thousand masks to uh, folks that were in the streets and we're happy to do that. And then next week, uh, we'll have touchless temperature kiosks available for visitors at City Hall. We'll uh, then as we get more product uh, in place, we'll be putting these touchless temperature kiosks at the entrance to City Hall. The library and the police department uh, deploying those um, next week. We'll be doing some in-service uh, training. Uh, for city staff and department directors this week. And I'd like to take a quick moment to give a shout out to the El Segundo Media and Public Information Team. Martha Guzman um, and and Hurtado and her staff and and the staff that El Segundo Media. Have been doing an absolutely incredible job of pushing out relative um, timely data on a daily basis. The um, video content uh, has been fantastic with the various uh, social media campaigns that we're doing. And I would say um, I'm finding and getting feedback that we're leading the South Bay. In fact, many of our. Cities are following and taking our information and using it for their their uh, individual uses. And I just wanted to thank our team for their hard work and effort, uh, really outstanding work and high-quality product being put out. Uh, so that ends my presentation and uh, apologize for the um, delay in getting the screen up. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Councilor Drew?
Uh, Chief, yeah, I have a question on the metrics that they're now using. Okay, so the second one was uh, test positivity rates.
Yes, sir.
So. Enlighten me a little bit here. So if you are a perfectly healthy person right now and you decide you want to go in for a COVID test, are they gonna give you that test?
Uh, technically, you should be hitting the the requirements of having uh, symptoms and or a need if you're traveling out of. The area or if you're gonna have a medical procedure and require it, but um, I I don't think anybody would turn away. Uh, request for a test at the one of the county um, testing sites.
Well, truthfully, on that metric then. It's really stacked against you because you're testing sick people, right? So technically, if we all decided to go in and get the test, even though we're not feeling it, that positivity rate could go way, way down. So I I guess I know you didn't put the metric in place. My frustration is that we're being guided by metrics that are inaccurate. And apparently, there's nothing we can do about it. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Terrific. Thank you for your report.
Uh, you know, and and uh, the 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 good news I will tell you is that. The metrics are in a very favorable trajectory. I know that you're frustrated with the method in which they're taken. Um, we are.
I am because based on what you just showed me. I don't know, but there's no, literally in a perfect scenario. Not until January. Perfect scenario based on the amount of time you have to wait to move in between tiers. That's a, that's the best-case scenario to get to to where you're basically almost fully open.
We're we're definitely hitting uh, the uh, metrics to be in tier two with the test positivity rate. Um, with the number of test uh, positives. Uh, excuse me, the number of new cases declining like we saw today. We could potentially uh, be eligible for moving that direction in the next couple of weeks. Uh, but to your point, moving from tier two to tier three and tier four, um, that will take some time.
So again, we're talking months, not weeks, in the best-case scenario.
I I I think that that would be an accurate statement, sir.
Chief Donovan, it's it's three weeks in eve in each phase is the mandatory piece. And if there is a spike, we have a rain snap and a whole bunch of people are indoors together. And all of a sudden, our our positivity rate on a random Tuesday and Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday spiked back up. Do we vault right back?
Yes, sir.
Deck is stacked, Chris.
Uh, it it's remarkable and editorialized that we are, again, in a county with more people than the state of Michigan. And treated uniformly in this regard. Uh, is you can understand the frustration of business owners, parents. It is just. Yeah, and and there's no guarantee that this next week, this won't change again, right? This is, these things are all written in sand.
Uh, this this change came um, on the twenty-eighth. We were made aware of it on the twenty-ninth. And started to look at it over the weekend and we're able to put this together yesterday.
Uh, if I could have one request, as we publish our data updates. Can we do our best to ensure that this data is represented on it? I think that people are gonna want to know what the key piece of information they should be looking at. And if these are the metric scores and this is what the city puts out as information, uh, let's make sure that this is front and center because people want to know that.
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
Thank you.
And this is Councilwoman Pritzker. Um, Chief, I just want to make sure, I know it came up in the public comments about our playgrounds. We are going to be, as soon as we get approval to to open them. We will be opening them and we are keeping our ears to the ground, ensuring that we are waiting for that green light. Um, but we, we're not, as soon as, as soon as we get the green light, it's gonna be turnkey and we will be able to open up our parks. ASAP, correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, every time the county has made a change to the health order or they have. Uh, indicated uh, through um, written documentation that we're able to make a modification. Um, the city's been very responsive and typically within uh, uh, a number of hours to at most a day, we're able to. Uh, pivot and and um, make the necessary changes locally. And as it relates to the playgrounds and play fields. Uh, that would be a fairly easy um, uh, change that we would do. We we would coordinate with uh. The rec uh, Parks and Recreation, Recreation Parks Division, excuse me. And uh, make all necessary steps uh, to comply with whatever health order. But uh, we're certainly very aware of of the demands on our community and the requests that are placed upon them. We do have a really good uh, connection with the LA County Public Health regularly reaching out to that individual and and getting the most um, updated.
So to um, to Councilmember Kementel's um, comment, is there any way we could get a waiver or a just. Uh, uh, to be treated differently than LA County if we as a South Bay, our numbers. Were dramatically different than than the overall LA County numbers?
Uh, we've submitted requests um, and uh, the information that's been provided to us is the county goes as a whole. And um, although we may see uh, very low numbers locally here in El Segundo. The steps that they take are uh, region-wide.
But Chief, to that point, I know we wrote a letter to Gavin Newsom and to Supervisor Han to request that carve-out for her district specifically. If, do you know if we would meet the criteria that you laid out there if it was just her district of LA County? Cause I know the South Bay, I've been watching their numbers. Their numbers outside of a couple cities are really good.
Yeah, I think if we, I'm not certain, I'd have to do some number crunching there with the team, but I would imagine that the South Bay numbers. In comparison to other areas of the county of Los Angeles, South Bay numbers are are in a really good trajectory. And I would imagine a carve-out, I know for El Segundo, if we carved out, uh, we would definitely be in a different tier than if we were um, combined with the county of Los Angeles. Um, no, we we can certainly continue to advocate for uh, local considerations. We're happy to do that. To uh, write letters and to communicate um, those concerns um, and and we'll we'll continue to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm I'm here in the council being very concerned about the news you delivered.
I understand the frustration and I I apologize that I'm. Um, the one carrying this this news. And um, again, we we were only made aware of this uh, change. For the governor's um, blueprint uh, just a few days ago.
Yeah, Councilman Drew.
So, yeah, Chief, listen, I always try to shoot the messenger, right? And I I get it. And and I understand. First of all, your report's great. It's very thorough, very professional, so please understand the frustration as.
So please understand the frustration is obviously not with, with staff. I think you've all done an amazing job during this timeframe. Um, I just think at, at some point in time, I think what we just talked about is that with the South Bay numbers being what they are and if they continue on the same trajectory, at what point do we start to have to put pressure on just to be able to rescue the businesses that we have in town? Because when this is all said and done, no one's coming in to rescue us. So we need to advocate for ourselves as best we can. And even though we think it's an uphill battle, it's going to keep doors getting slammed on us. I think we should just start making a lot of noise based on the facts that our numbers are extremely different than the rest of the county. So I don't know what the protocol is for that, but I think we're at that point or getting there very, very soon.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Uh, Chief, I want to echo Councilman Rishiru's, uh, Councilman Pimentel and Councilman Perstak's words here. In the current landscape that we've seen this year, the squeaky wheel is getting the oil. And I mean, just recently, you know, we were approached by other cities to stand together to let our state assembly people know where we stand on local control. And we were successful as far as I can tell. I think that if it's a matter of, you know, staff continually reaching out to Janice Hahn's office, continuing to send letters to the governor's office, whatever it is, you know, at some point, we need to be seen as separate from the county. Otherwise, to Councilmember Rishiru's point, we're going to be having this same conversation in January. The only difference is we will literally have frying pans that we are hitting ourselves in the head with come January. So, uh, yeah, I think squeaky wheel gets the oil. I'm not saying we should, you know, organize a march or anything along those lines. But I'm just saying that, you know, in today's landscape, like we need to make our voices heard. And if we're going to use, you know, the proper channels and send letters, I myself, I, I would be happy to, to approve that or, or vote if something was on the agenda for us to send letters on a weekly basis, bi-weekly basis, whatever it may be.
Also, why don't we let Mr. Mitnick weigh in and we all feel the same way. So Scott, I think you hear loud and clear what the intent is there. Is that correct?
We, we can certainly do that. It falls within the legislative platform format. We would be happy to do that and, and to continue to work closely with our neighboring cities and encourage them to do the, the same with respect to their area.
I think to Scott, uh, Scott's point is if we just get, if we could actually get consensus with the South Bay and then produce the numbers and then get them to produce a letter with us that in, in conjunction with us, where we can constantly send it to them either a weekly basis showcasing our South Bay numbers and show that we've done the work to ensure that we have met the criteria as, as a, as a unit. Um, I think that would help. And if we just could do an outreach to those cities in the South Bay, get them on board and then work together and then on a weekly basis, send a letter with the updated numbers as an overall South Bay. So we're not asking them to do any work. We've already done the work. Just please give us a waiver.
And the perfect vehicle would be the cog because you have all the South Bay cities represented as well as county rep and city rep. And if the board approves it, you can have staff dedicated to that effort at the cog. So that would be, I'd be happy to bring that forward to Scott. We can talk about that. Great point. All right. Any further comments on this one? Okay. Great. Chief, well done. Thank you. Item three is an update from Barbara Voss, Deputy City Manager on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. Barbara Voss, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Boils, and good evening, City Council. Quick update, just a couple of minutes this evening. As I reported two weeks ago, we hired our consultant Jimmy Pete to assist with this process and guide the DEI as we move forward. We, and as I, I mentioned last time as well, just want to recap the numbers. We received 69 applications. First round is Mr. Pete reviewing the applications. The criteria that he's using to review the applications are the level of detail in each of the responses provided. Looking at any education, training related to diversity, equity and inclusion. And also looking at each applicant's perspective as they describe it on diversity with the objective of having a committee that represents, that's very diverse, that represents many different perspectives within the community. With the, the goal of promoting diversity, equity and inclusion ultimately, but coming from different angles is the idea. So Jimmy has completed his first round. He's down to 36 applicants and we will be reaching out to those applicants and scheduling interviews with Mr. Pete. And then once those interviews are complete, he will select from the 35 interviews, the top 20 candidates. Those candidates that will then be scheduled for their interviews with city council. So you'll be receiving invitations for a couple of sessions, closed sessions, not closed sessions, excuse me, open session to conduct these interviews. And then ultimately you will make your selection of the nine members of the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. And that's really all I had for this evening. We're moving forward. The process is going well. We have very strong applicants and I just look forward to continuing, continuing to move the committee forward. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichol might have one. He came out mute. Scott?
All right, Mr. Voss, a question. Thirty, what is it? Thirty-four individuals that will not be getting interviewed. Uh, who's reaching out to them?
I'm sorry, did you say with the, the 35 who are getting the interviews with Mr. Pete, who's reaching out to them?
Cause we had 69 total, right? So there's 34 people that took the time to fill out the application, right? Took the time to send it in and
Oh.
So how are we addressing those individuals of our community that put forth the effort to put an application in? Cause I, I just, I know this is new. We've never had 69 applicants for any city before. But we've never not interviewed every applicant. So I want to be very careful here because this is, these are members of our community. These are our neighbors. And, uh, you know, it takes, it takes time and effort to put yourself out there to even want to be interviewed, to want to join a committee, a commissioner board. And so I just want to make sure that our community understands that this was not a conversation had behind closed doors. We, we've hired a consultant and asked the consultant for advice on how to do this. And this is the advice that's coming to us.
Right. So our plan is to write a letter to each person who did not make the first round. Um, just to let them know, reiterate the application process and the number of applications received. And thank them for, for applying. But with 69 applicants, there is some expectation that, you know, not everyone is going to advance to even the interview stage. I don't think we've ever had that many before.
I, I guess, I guess I understand. I'm just, you know, we're, we're entrusting, we're, sorry if my internet's bad, but I understand if a lot of people, we got to whittle it down. But we're also entrusting, you know, Jimmy Pete, a professional that doesn't know El Segundo that well, is just beginning to learn El Segundo. You know, each one of us have had, you know, one-on-one with him to give him our perspective on the committee and what we're looking for. Ultimately, we're tasking him with making very difficult decisions that ultimately we will have to own as councilmembers. You know, we are those individuals representatives that didn't give them our, you know, FaceTime with us. We didn't give them an interview. You know, so I, I don't know how the rest of my, you know, my fellow councilmembers feel about this, but you know, I, I'm not, I don't want to say I'm looking forward to, or I would look forward to interviewing 69 people via Zoom or via teleconference because 15 minutes per person, you can do the math. But these are our constituents. They took the time to fill out the application. And I think that we just need to be very mindful of that and, and treat it with care.
Councilor Drew? Uh, Scott, I completely understand what you're saying. I, I think the part that I like about this though is that Jimmy Pete has a completely unbiased opinion about what he's reading. He doesn't know the individuals. He's going based off of what he's reading, very much the same as if you had an application for a position in your firm and 70 people came and gave you, gave you an application. You'd look through it and you would, you would narrow it down from there. I, I think this really, at least this first part ensures that things will be fair. Cause in the end, no matter what he whittles it down to, we still got to make a decision between nine out of 25 or nine out of 35. So in the end, it's still going to be us who, who, who has to make that call. And, and I think as we've all, in, in most of the things that we make decisions on up here, there's going to be people who are happy about it and people who are unhappy about it. But I, I get what you're saying. I just think from my perspective that I think this is a very, a pretty fair way to do it. And it will accelerate it a little bit. So I'm hoping that we can have this, um, this group seated maybe by the end of this, end of September. Is that even viable, Mr. Mitnick?
Yes, sir. That's our goal.
Yes, uh, October 1, um, or the first meeting in October, we should have the members selected. And I, I think to make it a little bit more personal, we'll ask, in addition to a letter, we will call each of the candidates who are not selected for that first interview, just to kind of let them know what the criteria was, what we were looking for and allow them to give their input and feedback as to, you know, what they hope to see out of the committee, even though they weren't selected as official members. That's helpful.
That's a great, that's a great idea. The personal touch, I think, is important.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any further requests to speak on this item. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Councilman Perstak.
I just did want to make sure that there's clarity that for any, um, any decision was made about any candidate. Jimmy Pete did interview each one of us to ensure he had a clear understanding of our expectations of this committee and the guidelines. So I just, I wanted to make sure that was clear that this, he's acting upon our information. And so I just wanted to make that clear prior to any decision being made that was, that was completed.
Thank you, Councilman Perstak.
Yeah.
I think it's hilarious that my kids never want to get in the camera, all five of them, when I'm on Zoom. But Chris's kids, they just got to jump in there like, like my dogs do. It's awesome. My kids are that way.
Try to get between a Pimentel and a microphone and you're going to get hurt.
Councilmember Nichol, does that alleviate your concerns, what you, what you heard? Are we good to move on on this item?
I think we have to move on because I, I think I'm alone here. I just, uh, I'm just, I'm overall concerned that each and every one of us is going to get an email from one of those three, four people that we know that took the time to, to fill out the application, sent it in, and they didn't get their, their moment, you know? And so I would say that if you guys, if all of us are not interviewing all 69 people, then no, not one of us will send an email to Barbara Voss or Scott Mitnick saying, hey, we got to get this guy an interview because he emailed me and, you know, he's been a member of the community for a long time and he'd be a great addition to this commission. I mean, we're either all in on Jimmy Pete making this cut down to the 20 people that we're going to talk to or we're not. Because if, you know, if I hear secondhand that one of us sent an email and somebody got in an interview and really they didn't make that first cut, I, I'm saying, let's interview everybody.
Got it. Okay. Councilmember Nichol, you got my word that I'm not interfering with the process. I'd rather relate, defer to the subject matter expert. And Lance says the same thing. So does Chris. So does Carol. Okay. Thank you all. Okay. Procedure motions. Thanks, Barbara. Appreciate that. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. And if you would please state your name, if someone would like to make a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by the title only?
Pimentel so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Nichol, second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, you pass 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, consent calendar. We only have three items this evening. One is approving minutes, two approving warrants, and the third item is the housing element update professional service agreement. Are there any polls this evening? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Drew so moved. Sure. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay. Consent passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, staff presentation. And we have adopted a resolution supporting the California Citizens for Local Control, a volunteer coalition comprised of cities working together to ensure that cities can continue to manage their own land and, and zoning issues. And Mr. Mitnick, I assume Mrs. Guzman-Hurtado is going to present on this?
That is a correct assumption.
Okay. Martha, thank you. Welcome.
Oh, she's not.
We can't hear you yet.
Not yet, no. Let's give her a second here. Maybe she can get on another device or something.
Well, we can move on to the next item and come back to her.
Okay. Good idea.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I add something briefly while, while we wait on that? I know in the consent calendar, we mentioned the housing element study. I think it's just worth it for, to acknowledge that that is separate and apart from our additional housing element study. This is for the five-year Rena regulatory cycle and is not to be confused with the other studies we're doing that are specific to El Segundo land use.
Yep. Great point. Thanks for differentiating. Okay, uh, we're going to move on, Scott. We'll move on to item five then, right? Unless she's ready.
No, she's ready.
Oh, great.
No, her, her mic is muted.
Okay. So we're going to go on to, we'll go on to item five as Mr. Mitnick suggested for now. And I see Mrs. McCullough up and ready. This is the proposed El Segundo Library Park Activation Capital Improvement Project Design. Great. Hi, Melissa.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council members and everybody watching remotely. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to offer an update about the Library Park Activation Project on behalf of the Library Services, Recreation and Parks and Public Works Departments in partnership with the Library Board of Trustees, Friends of the Library, Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, Recreation and Parks Commission and more. The project was approved as part of the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2019, 2020 with a budget of $120,000 as a way to revitalize the space outside of the children's library. So the area that you see behind me, if you can see my, my background, by adding outdoor gathering, connection, activity and learning opportunities, including flexible seating, a small stage with electricity for cultural programming, a sensory garden and natural play elements. Implementation of the plan will help with library overcrowding as many areas were completely full prior to the pandemic during after school hours, including the children's library, the teen zone and our study rooms. Opening the long closed library park entrance during targeted hours will improve access to the library's collection, services, staff and space in addition to providing quick access in the other direction to library park from the library. A maximizing learning spaces grant from the California State Library funded design services for the project. And as part of this work, Tavi Design Group developed a concept for a storybook loop throughout library park in addition to designing the learning garden. The storybook loop encourages participants to stop at various stations along their walk through the park to read a complete story that can be changed out quarterly. The playful design mirroring, story development was envisioned with a system of spaces and open-ended experiences. The playful design mirroring mirroring uh story development was envisioned with a system of spaces and open-ended experiences. To support exploration and movement by people of all ages. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee will be recommending a one hundred thousand dollar allocation from the Cultural Development Fund at the next city council meeting. To supplement the Library Park Activation Budget and support artistic elements that are identified as part of the expanded design. Library Park has transformed multiple times during its ninety-year history with changes in landscaping, cascading fountains, and a lily pond. The addition of the bicentennial band bandstand and more. We're very fortunate to have designer Tavi Protola here tonight to share his plan. That has the potential to activate Library Park in a thoughtful, imaginative, and interactive way as part of the next phase of Library Park's evolution. While preserving green space for summer concerts, fairs, and other community events. Tavi?
Thank you. Uh Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me. Um I yeah, I'd love to walk you through the uh proposed plans. Um I think I need to have permission to share screen.
I think you should be able to, but if but if you're not, I I can share mine as well.
Um if you don't mind, yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so. Again, my name is Tavi Protola of Tavi Design Group. Um I was tasked uh to come up with a conceptual design for. Engaging the uh library park with the actual library space. We uh took. Two big moves to make this connection. The first is a learning garden. Um located directly uh off of the children's library area on the lower floor. Um this learning garden um consists of a shaded amphitheater space. A small patio uh gathering area and a. And a uh garden space uh with pollinating and sensory plants. We also have a loop. Uh storybook loop is the second portion of the design. Um this is taking uh five nodes uh and exploring uh ways to engage both literacy, nature, and uh outdoor play. Uh and really engaging children with uh both uh. The the physical elements of a story. And um through these five uh different nodes, children get to experience each phase of a uh story arc. Go to the next slide, please. Um we. Just diving into the learning garden area, um this area is going to have a small stage. Uh a little amphitheater with uh very sort of rustic uh log seating. Uh the idea is that this isn't a uh. A heavy-handed slick patio space. This is a garden, a really uh natural uh flowing space. We have also the uh. Planting around the outside will will consist of uh. Uh sensory garden. So this is plants that uh provide uh senses of smell, uh touch, uh taste. Uh interesting pollinating plants. Um we can go to the next slide and I can walk through some of these ideas. This is. A set of furnishings that were uh selected for the site. These are all uh made from recycled materials. And we can go to the next slide. Some conceptual images of the small low-stage area. Um. The stage. Will be used for outdoor reading or small events. Um. Just really wanting to bring some of the uh joy for literature outdoors and into this uh outdoor space. Um some ideas for evening lighting, uh ambiance lighting. Um and there's the concept for the amphitheater seating. It's really just a very simple. Rough log feel. Next slide. And um a couple of the other things we'd like to incorporate into the garden, really um inviting uh pollinating animals. Uh insects and birds. Um bird bath and uh. Looking right outside of the window from the children's garden, um you can see this. This one area where the uh downspouts are are letting out, and we wanted to be able to have a eco-reglatory. Uh daylighting of this water. So on a rainy day when children are inside, um they're able to see. Uh you know, the way the water flows and is able to actually infiltrate into the ground. Next slide, please. And we can probably go through these rather quickly. This is just a conceptual planting palette. Uh again, digging into the ideas of of uh senses. Smell, taste, plants that are uh interesting to to touch and see, and also that would support local endemic uh. Insect life uh like the the blue butterfly. And then digging digging into the um the storybook loop. Um again, these are five nodes that will uh go through the arc of an actual story. Each one will have a small uh podium with portions of a story. People would kind of go through them in the same way you would an exercise parkour uh course in a park. Uh each uh each node will have both the story and something um to physically represent the space. This would be um. You know, something to get the large body play, some excitement of this uh adventure story. Uh whether it's some some walking or climbing or um or just even sitting and reading uh with uh with whoever you're enjoying the park with. So next slide. Um the first uh node is the exposition, the beginning of the adventure. Uh this is near the rose garden, and this is just a pathway. Um we were thinking of just a boardwalk path uh around and through the rose garden. Maybe some seat, uh some small seating area. The next node um is the um is a complication, that next phase in a story where things get a little challenging. This will. Uh the reader actually needs to cross a threshold into an adventure. And we had some ideas on how to physically uh introduce this to to children as well. Uh these little tunnels or um stump stump balancing ideas. Everything here is is a. We're we're not looking at 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 playground concepts. These are just uh small landscape interventions. Um with a with a low impact. Uh the next slide, please. So uh a- after uh the the second node, we get into this escalation where the story gets a little more complicated. Uh the tensions are high and sort of the uh excitement would uh cause. Cause kids to want to jump and run around. Um so we have some other uh large body play elements. But things that also just sort of blend into a natural landscape. Node four is the is the climax of the story, uh high drama. We were thinking of, you know, just a few large boulders to climb on. Um maybe a uh a a figural sculpture of some sort that can be a seat as well in the landscape. And then finally, um after the the climax of the story, um moving on to the the fifth node. Uh we have the resolution, which is a sort of a joyous, victorious space, thinking of uh. Possibly a ribbon-type art installation that could be changed out. Along with the book. Um the book sections. Uh and also this. This location closer to the library looks down and on to the rest of the park where you can see the different. Portions of the story you've already accomplished and and where you've you where you've come from. And that is sort of the 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 big idea. Uh you know, this is a really exciting project for uh for for us. The combination of of literacy, nature, and play is something we're really passionate about and really excited to uh to share these early concepts with everybody.
Great presentation. Thank you. Thank you both. Any questions? Councilman Nichol.
Only thing that popped into my head was to make sure, and Melissa, you're probably way ahead of me on this, but uh corresponding with. Uh recreation and parks in regards to concerts in the park and obviously not creating any obstructions for. Other activities that are already currently active in the park on a on a yearly basis. Uh I'm sure you're already thinking about that, but I just wanted to make it mentioned.
Absolutely. Meredith has actually been involved throughout the whole process. Um and so we will. We'll definitely keep that in mind moving forward.
Great. Any further thoughts?
I just want to thank you, Melissa. I know that um this is something that's been near and near to my heart about activating this library park and. I think um, you know, if we can get people out into the park, sitting in the park with blankets, reading stories. Um you know, we have this wonderful green space, and I'm actually pleased to tell you or to say that. Um I've seen it, the library park used much more during this COVID time. And I want to continue to see that the park being used by all residents to just have a sit quiet picnic or. Just enjoy the green space and run around with their kids. So thank you for for acting upon this and following through, and I think it's uh going to be amazing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protola.
I know that Councilmember uh Pierce stick has championed this and and it looks wonderful and uh well, obviously with the great work that you always do, Melissa. It looks wonderful. I one quick question. Is everything we've seen from this presentation within the current budget allocation? Or does this require the supplement from the Arts and Culture Fund?
Well, we we could probably do the learning garden with the original allocation, but to to fully realize the storybook loop, we would need. Need the extra. Extra contribution.
And do you know, and this may be a question for Mr. Mitnick, when when do we enter that phase of appropriation? And then I'll yield the floor. Um Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to ask Melissa, is that piece in the proposed budget that's coming to council on September fifteenth?
It is. There is a revised proposal that um for your consideration at the September fifteenth meeting. And and this is part of that proposal.
Thank.
Excellent. All right, we'll look forward to it. Thank you. All right, item four, we're back to. The support resolution supporting California citizens for local control. So. This is Guzman Hurtado. We're back to you.
Yeah, good evening.
Oh, go go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My apologies for the technical difficulties, but uh. Um here I am. So thank you for your patience this evening. Um to move forward with my staff's um presentation, the legislature of the state of California has proposed a number of bills addressing a range of housing issues. That could potentially preempt local jurisdictions' control over land use and zoning issues. California Citizens for Local Control is being spearheaded by the City of Torrance to create a united coalition. Of cities to address local control issues and show state legislators that there is strong opposition. As the first step in the formation of a coalition, cities are being asked to pass a resolution in solidarity with other cities. Committed to opposing proposed bills that threaten to erode local control. The resolution stating strong support for retaining local control aligned with the city's. City of El Segundo's legislative platform that opposes state and federal legislation that preempts the city's local authority. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any indication? Uh it looked like Mike Griffiths, Councilmember Griffiths, was leading this with Torrance. I I assume the mayor's on board, right? Pat Fury and the entire council's on board. Have they signed the resolution themselves?
Yes, Mayor. Um the City of Torrance has signed the resolution. Other cities that have signed on um are Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, Rancho Palos Verdes, Lomita, Longdale. Rolling Hills, Rolling Hill State, and Hidden Hills. I checked with um Councilmember Griffiths uh this afternoon. He said that eight and or eight to ten other cities are in the process of having a resolution.
Great. Thank you for that. Councilmembers? Mayor Protem, and then we'll go to Councilmember Giroux.
It. If if there's a bit of a roadshow o- o- on this, is Torrance the one leading it? Are we, or are they the ones who are making calls to. Uh some of the other eighty-eight cities in LA County and beyond, or there are things that that we can more actively participate in? I think that looking. At the roll call, the surprisingly high roll call of votes for some of the worst legislation. Uh indicates that there's some outreach that needs to happen to the other assembly districts. Uh if if there are things that. Torrance and organizing this is they need help with to talk to some of our sister councils around the county. I think some of us would be very happy to participate in that.
Councilor Giroux. Uh yeah, I just want to thank you, Martha. It's a good report, and uh I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, I know you've put in a lot of work on this, a lot of extra hours and a lot of phone calls and letters because there's. There are so many bills being bandied about in Sacramento that could really significantly affect us. So. Appreciate you all taking the time to take care of this and keep us informed.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. My pleasure. Um okay, so do we, any other comments before? We need to vote on this then. Yes, we do. Um any further comments before someone makes a motion to approve?
Perstak, so a motion, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Wait, guys, um. The city attorney needs to read the resolution.
Oh, thank you.
It's Mark on the.
There it is, Mr. Henley there.
I am, I'm sorry. I just have to get to the right screen, screens. Here we go. Sorry about that. My computer just. The Moritz, ordinance pending Title Five, Chapter Two of the El Segundo Municipal Code to require bulky item pickup service from. Wait, I'm on the wrong one.
We need to go the resolution. For.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. I just. It resolves in the city council, I. Uh city council, the city of El Segundo, California, expressing opposition to proposed housing. Legislation expressing support for action to further strengthen local democracy, authority, and control is ready for adoption.
Okay, so uh Councilor Perstak, your motion still stand, I assume, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Nichol, second.
Great, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Giroux. Councilmember Nichol.
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Aye.
And Mayor Boyle.
Yes.
Sorry. And resolution passes five oh.
Excellent. Sure, all right. Thank you. Good, everybody. All right, I have six. I'm going to recuse myself on this one. I don't think it's required, but I have an abundance of caution. I have a business that. Is in the same industry, so I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Protem Pimentel to. Uh introduce number six, if you would, please, and then I'll bow out.
Certainly. I am moving down the script to item six. This is an introduction or to will introduce an ordinance amending Title Five, Chapter Two of the El Segundo Municipal Code for Garbage and Rubbish. To require bulky items and holiday tree pickup service for multifamily properties. Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this item? Okay, Mr. Mayor and or Mr. Mayor, Protem, members of the council, we will have our new Public Works Director Elias Sassoon do it. I just want to have a pre- preface comment here, city council and members of the community who are watching. This is um a good example of your. Your uh city employees listening clearly to uh concerns that have been articulated by city council and the public. To have a a better, more effective response to bulky item pickup issues, especially in the alleys. By in and around apartment buildings, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director. Thank you.
Uh thank you so much. Uh good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This new ordinance before you is regarding the bulky items and holiday tree pickup services for multifamily properties. Next slide, please. As you can see on these photos, we're dealing with abandoned bulky items such as appliances. Uh couches, uh basically, as you can see on on the photos, vacuum cleaners and and so forth. These uh these items, uh these bulky items are often uh seen at multifamily properties. So the purpose, uh next slide, please. The purpose of of the ordinance is to deal with the challenge to the community. Uh we would like to preserve the public health and the safety of our residents. We would also like to eliminate the very unsightly nuisance that. That relates to to these uh dumpings. Uh also, the city's ongoing effort has been to properly handle these items. Also, the city's ongoing effort has been to properly handle these items. With respect to recycling and diversion of the solid waste from the landfills. Next slide, please. The requirements, basically the section five dash two dash fourteen A of, of the municipal code. Already requires the owner or the occupant of each multifamily premises. To, to deal with these bulky items and make arrangements for the haulers to pick them up. The hauler also would pick up and at no charge transport these recycled, the holiday trees. And, and this is to note that the haulers must secure a permit from the city to operate within the. City limits of the city of El Segundo. And if they do not comply, they may lose their permits. Next slide, please. So what is next? We're scheduled to come back to the city council for the second reading. This is on September fifteenth. And then if adopted, this ordinance will take effect as of October fifteenth. Of two thousand twenty. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Henley, would you like to read the ordinance? Oh, pardon me, pardon me. Councilmember Nicole.
I just wanted to make mention, there is a resident who lives on East Acacia, Bob Siegel. Who, uh, for the past couple of years has been doing a great job trying to keep his alley behind his home clean. You know, I think we have found ourselves in this position because when we changed trash companies. You know, and most trash companies now have the automated arm and individual cans. And when there is, what Bob has experienced is when tenants move out of apartment buildings. That he shares an alley with, many times they'll leave a couch, a chair or something, assuming that it's going to get picked up. And, and it doesn't get picked up. And so it'll sit there for, you know, God knows how long. And I think there's many people in El Segundo that have forgotten that they can't just put whatever they want out on the curb and it gets picked up. And so Elias, thank you for presenting this and I am all in favor of this and moving forward. Because I think there are many things that we are responsible for and many things we are not responsible for. But I think every resident of El Segundo would look at the city and say, hey. If somebody leaves it, it's not me, it's their, whose responsibility is it? Can, can we just get it taken care of? Because if you're driving through this town and you see a bunch of trash or large items sitting on the curb for periods of time, it just looks bad on us as a city. And so I am in favor of this one hundred and ten percent.
Thank you so much. And the residents, if you see any of, of the bulky dumping. By all means, please do call Public Works and, and you could even call for me. And I'd be more than delighted to get involved and take care of it right away.
And then. Elias, I know that this fall we'll be having a, with through Edco for the residents. A pickup of bulky items. So can we just make sure that we give people advance notice of that information and put it on our Facebook? So twice a year and it should be coming up soon and then in this fall, because we did it in the spring. And I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that timeframe so that they can prepare for it. And get ready to put their stuff out for that bulky pickup.
I'd be more than delighted to do that, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Drew, anything? Well, thank you all very much. Thank you Elias for presenting it. And I think Councilmember Nicole, thank you very much for drawing attention to the efforts of Mr. Siegel. Some of the other residents who routinely take this upon themselves, point out the issue and address it. And with that, over to you, Mr. Henley, to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Mayor Prost, I will. And just to add and to kind of respond to what Councilmember Nicole said. When the, the trash franchise was changed in the, the different units. There was changes in how the different units were serviced. The city doesn't have a franchise over certain. R two and R three properties, notice has been given so that can occur. It takes five years, I believe, the notice is given about a year ago. So in four years, we will have more control over all of this as a city. But until then, this, this ordinance should help out a great deal. But with that said, an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter two of the El Segundo Municipal Code. To require bulky item pickup services for multifamily properties is ready for introduction.
Excellent. Stating your last name, who would like to introduce the ordinance?
First step, so moved.
This will be brought back at the next regular council meeting for potential adoption.
That's correct. The second reading is slated for September fifteenth. Madam Clerk, would you like to summon the mayor or send the sergeant at arms to retrieve him?
I let him back in.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, we're back. Thanks, Mayor Prost. We're back on item number seven, which is an update. On the city's business assistance in response to LA County's reopening safer at work. And in the, I'm sorry, reopening safer at work and in the community. And considering sharing ongoing associated costs with businesses regarding temporary barricades. Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, member of the, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry, I got a real bad echo there. We'll have Sam Lee, our planning director, and Elias Sassoon, our Public Works Director, doing that. I just want to say in simple terms, council, this is the report card on how well the temporary measures we took. Your direction to open up downtown to the businesses by allowing restaurants to have outdoor seating. And the public right of way and the sidewalks and the parking spaces. And in one case, actually shutting the road down. So here's our report card of how well it's gone. We said we'd get back to you by Labor Day. This is the closest meeting before Labor Day. So I'm going to turn it over now to Sam. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Boils and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you. This is a, a joint presentation. It'll be with Mr. Sassoon. And we have a brief presentation to update you on the city's efforts to assist in businesses during COVID. So give some, to give some context, we'll first provide a brief history. We'll explain how we got to where we are. Then we'll provide an update on the current status. Followed up by some information about the cost up to date and, and anticipated cost into the future. And we'll end with a recommendation moving forward. So council, city council normally provides a good direction to staff. But back in May, council made it crystal clear to go and help those businesses during this, this, this COVID situation. So staff took your direction and we developed the plan and proceeded to move forward. First, we asked the businesses, we asked them, what do you need? What can we do as a city to help you? And they told us through an online application process, they told us what they need. We took that information and the city's team, made up of planning, building, public works, police and fire. Quickly met to discuss what was proposed by the businesses. And we considered, among other things, about traffic flow, pedestrian safety and police and fire responsibilities. And not every suggestion was adopted, but we came up with a plan that worked for most. And that plan included closing a street, closing a lane and removing several street parking in various areas. Then we asked ourselves a couple of other questions. We said, what are, could there be some unintended consequences? So we, we decided to ask the people and businesses that will be impacted by, by those plans. A survey was sent out and we received the feedback. First, it was about. Closing of Richmond. And the results was overwhelmingly in support. Seventy-eight percent supported us closing this, closing Richmond in order to help those businesses. Second survey was about Main Street. It was about closing a lane and removing several parking spaces on Main Street. And again, there was tremendous support in the community to do that. So we were now ready to take action. And as one councilperson pointed out today. We were waiting for the green light. And as anticipated, the county issued a new order on the week of May twenty-six. And the city issued our administrative order, number one, on that week, on May twenty-nine. Armed with council's direction, county's order, city's administrative order and feedback from our businesses and residences. Staff met on that Saturday and called every one of those businesses that had applied for temporary use and encroaching permits and issued permits. So here are some examples. First on Richmond Street, it helped Slice and Pint, DeLuca, Second City Bistro. And it was only a bonus that they actually received some good press. Second was on Main Street. This impacted Salsa Tavern and Brewport. And there'll be some additional work on Main Street that will help other businesses. And again, the city and businesses received some good press. Some other examples are at Brewport, Richmond Bar and Grill. And IHOP and on PCH. Um, to date, there are thirty-seven permits. There's a couple in the works, but there's just under forty. They're mostly clustered around downtown, but also in other parts of the city, including at the Plaza and AC Hotel. That brings us to the cost and I'm going to hand over the mic to Mr. Sassoon.
Thank you, Sam. So the total cost of the permit fees. That we did not charge the, the owners of the, of the businesses. It totaled about twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. And then there was also the cost of barricading. And that cost, so far, we have spent about forty-four thousand dollars and that includes staff time. And the ongoing cost is about six thousand dollars per month. And this is mainly for the, for the barricades rentals. Next slide. So what we intend to, to do going forward. We would like to keep everything going at, at no cost to the businesses till end of the year. In other words, till end of the year, the businesses could continue ask for permits. We process their permits at no cost to them. We will get the brick, the barricades. And, and we spend our time to set the barricades and pick up the rental at no cost to the businesses. But then starting January first through March thirty-first of next year. We would like to collect at least fifty percent of the cost for, for the. For the, for the, for the cost from the, from the businesses. And then after March thirty-first, we would like the businesses to pay hundred percent cost of, of the barricading. So the first three rows has to do with barricading. And then with respect to the permit cost, we would, we would suggest that we continue to issue the permits. At no cost to the businesses through end of March of next year. But then after March is, is gone, after March thirty-first, starting April first. We will charge the businesses only fifty percent the cost of the permits. So that's pretty much concludes the, the presentation. And we'll be glad to answer any, any question that you, you may have.
All right. Thank you. I don't see any hands up yet from council members. Oh, Councilmember Purstuck.
So I had a question. How, in regards to the cost of the permit, the, the cost to the city as far as. Issuing the permit has already been completed in that, you know, the work was already done. So what's the additional cost post March thirty-first? Are you talking about new permits?
Yes, we would apply for the new permit. Yes.
Yeah.
And then my other question is, so what revenue is the city gaining by having these restaurants open? And it does that gain not just offset the cost? So if restaurants had to close because they weren't able to operate outside. What's, are we, aren't we actually in a net positive? Though we are picking up the cost of the barricades, aren't we currently in a net positive? Because we're actually gaining, getting revenue from the, having these restaurants open? So I'm just not sure why we would, you know, you know, you could, as the saying say, cut your nose just about yourself. It's like, why would we charge them? And if that would trigger them to have to close, then we would be a loser as well. So I just wanted to understand how much revenue we, we as a city are gaining by having these restaurants open.
I, I, I could tackle that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. The arrangement that we went into is that we would subsidize and pick up the cost. Recognizing the, the hardships and so on. I will share with you, it's a little bit unusual. Many other cities, including cities south of us, the businesses are paying the, the cost for, for all of this. So this is a compromise proposal and the actual cost could, could be higher. But we're trying to be a good partner and to help prime the pump with these businesses. This is a, this is a pretty fair approach a, as we go forward. So the amount of revenues that we're getting in versus the cost, we can do a little deeper dive to, to get that exact information for you. But if we didn't do this, these businesses, many of them would likely fail. So during this difficult period.
Well, and I, my other question is, is that, you know, we don't really under, know when the county is going to allow them to have indoor dining. So I think until that decision's made, it's going to be really hard for us to identify when we want to start charging. Because as you mentioned, if we start charging, these restaurants may have to close. In that, you know, they're just barely making it by having.
Yeah.
Outdoor seating.
Right. And, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the other point to keep, to keep in consideration that we did not cost out here. Is what is the value of having all that extra space, the public right of way without having to purchase it? Or to lease it or to rent it. So we're providing that public land for, for no charge. So the actual benefits that we're providing are far greater. We feel this is a good compromise to see how it goes. If in fact, the pandemic goes longer and the businesses are in this situation longer, we're willing to be even more flexible. And perhaps look at revising this and extending it even further. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, except I've got two, at least one or two council members would like to speak. So first hand up I saw was Councilmember Drew.
Uh, yeah, I, I think echoing Carol's comments is that without really knowing what's going to happen. And kind of, you know, when we looked at Chief Donovan's, you know, report. It, it's tough to tell right now where we're going to be. Now, I, I understand the permit cost and the barrier cost. If and when indoor dining is allowed, right? Because now you're talking about an extra. You know, right now, we're talking about survival and, you know, kudos to staff, getting everything done. Because I think without doing what we had done, I think most of those restaurants would be closed right now. So I'm glad that's happened. The, 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 the permit fees and things like that, I understand there's a, there's a fee involved with that. But this is not a cost to the city at this point. So again, I understand, once it's been opened up and you can survive on your normal business strategy. And this is extra. But until then, I, I, I think we need to be very, very lenient. As to what we're looking at. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Drew. I think Mayor Prost had his hand up too. Chris, was that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would, I would ask the one, I think this is, this is largely a really good framework. Because it allows the businesses to start budgeting for something. And I think that we are probably all generally on the same page. That if we continue to get these curveballs from the state or county and we need to adjust, then we can do that. But this gives things a, 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 a business, a, something that they can use to plan and budget going into the new year. I would ask on barriers and not knowing the barrier rental market, at what point do we own them? You know, it, it would seem that that is, but look, that's a tremendous business to be in right now, apparently. But at what point, if we have these open-ended.
Uh, but at what point, if we have these open-ended, you know, if our worst case scenario comes through, as we alluded to earlier, and we're heading into the cold season where people stay inside and we are not needing state metrics. I mean, at, at, at this point, we've likely paid for a barrier four times over. Uh, do, do we look to just to go into a partnership or ask those businesses if they would like to make an offer to acquire them? That may be less expensive to them than a fifty percent rental for, for a fiscal quarter. Uh, that is, is a more of a thought piece consideration. Uh, but I think the very short version is, I, I think this plan is good as a planning metric. Uh, and if there are, or a budgeting metric, and if there are items out there that we need to address come December because our pandemic situation has changed for the ninth time, um, then we make adjustments from there.
Thank you, Mayor Purtem. Councilmember Nickel, did you want to weigh in on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Boils. Um, I think the shared cost concept is, um, it's something that we can work with. I think that, uh, staff should reach out to the business owners, uh, just to see, like, how is it going? Are they just getting by? Are they barely keeping the doors open? Or, you know, are they able to turn a profit in this current landscape? Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention regarding the permit cost, being that these permits are already done. If someone's going to come back to, you know, renew the permit, there's a lot less work. You know, the site plan has already been reviewed, staff has already walked the site, uh, things are already in place. I think in regards to the permit thing, I do not think there should be a cost for any permit renewal. Uh, and maybe fifty percent of the cost for any new permits that come in following March thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-one. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I would just say that I, I also agree with Councilmember Nickel in the center of the council. I think we should absorb more of the cost, particularly the permits, because that's really an internal cost allocation for us. As it relates to the barriers, I don't know, I thought it was Councilmember Purstuck, but maybe not, that had an idea of maybe using the Arts and Culture Committee to help us with some more attractive barrier options like they've done in some other cities. I haven't seen them, but I've heard that maybe it was the Riviera Village in Redondo. I'm not, I'm not certain, but they had a better-looking barrier system out of bright orange, um, kind of barricade system. I think the same way that I felt good about subsidizing the art walk because we could justify and substantiate quantifiable metrics like, hey, we're going, this is an investment in our community for an economic development reason. We know we're going to get media impressions. We know we're going to have more people in our town. We know we will get more business ultimately and aware, brand awareness. Same thing with this. I think that we are definitely, we're, we're helping the restaurants to survive to Lance's point. Uh, but we're also doing a great job of generating revenue. And just to remind everyone that more than ninety-eight percent of this town's general fund revenue comes from commerce. Not residential property tax, thanks to the Prop thirteen tax allocation that was done back in nineteen seventy-eight. So anything that we could do to help our businesses survive and ideally thrive is to the benefit of our residents as well, because it allows us to keep our services. So I would gladly support paying for the barriers in perpetuity, or at least as long as we allow outdoor permits. Having spoken to several restaurant owners, I know that they've done, some of them have done quite well with this new setup, as they should. And I think that it's gone, I think we've had, what, one complaint from one resident on the Richmond block so far. To me, that sounds like a resounding success. So I just want to also take a moment, Sam, and applaud you and Barbara Voss and everybody else that spent that Saturday calling all those businesses. It was clear that we were a leading, uh, leading city on this front when it came to standing up our, all of our business considerations and flexibility and variances, and kudos to you and your staff. And everybody at City Hall for making that a priority. So thank you.
So do we need to, uh, do you have enough Scott Mitnick to work with on that? What, what do you, what do you, what do you?
Yeah.
Did you hear her? What do you, okay.
Yeah, Council, I hear you loud and clear. I have a suggestion. We're not recommending sharing any costs or doing anything until the end of, or the beginning of the new calendar year. And that would just be on the barrier cost, but the permit cost, there's no recommendation until after March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I have a suggestion. How about if we come to you in, uh, the, the, in December, toward the end of December, the last meeting? And we can provide an update where things are. And then, um, at that point, have the suggested changes that you're talking about now, or a variation of, of, of the theme on, on that. Uh, I think we can do that. And, um, on the barriers, we, we absolutely would like, I can't remember Elias. I missed a little piece of his presentation, so I don't want to be redundant. But our desire is to own more of the barriers, uh, especially the more permanent ones. But there's a premium to be paid right now because of supply and demand. So ultimately, we will, as a city, own more barriers. And, um, the, the comment about working with the, um, the art and public places funding, uh, that con, that, that concept has been discussed by the Arts Committee on the fifteenth, you will, you will have a, an update on that. So that certainly can be woven into this. There's a lot of, um, cross-pollination and, um, opportunities here to incorporate art, good design and so on. Especially if we go down the path of having this become more permanent. Uh, and that it'll, it'll be woven in with a specific plan and all this other stuff. So this is setting the stage for something really cool, really nice. Um, and we hear you loud and clear about being more price sensitive and, and not be detrimental to the business owner. So would you be okay if we came back in the, the, in December with an update?
Yes, I think I would, and I'm looking to the colleagues, yes.
Okay.
So I'll say yes. Scott, one, one, one more question. I apologize. I know there was at least one business on Main that you and I talked about that had looked at maybe doing some additional tables. Do you have a sense of how many businesses, particularly restaurants, have not asked for permits? That you think, oh, it's kind of strange that they haven't, or they have an opportunity to?
Well, the answer would be yes, and we can, um, the answer is yes. I mean, there are some, and they, they have. Um, Sam, I don't know how quite to articulate this. Uh, we, we're certainly aware of the lay of the land, who's asked for what, who hasn't. So the answer to that question is yes.
Yep. Mr. Lee, please.
Yeah, so, um, you know, there are, um, there, there's a few different types of businesses. One was, um, hair salons, nail salons and the like. Um, they, they, there are a few, uh, rep, businesses that have requested that. We're, we're crossing our fingers. We're hopeful that the county is going to, um, issue a revised order that would allow, um, those businesses to open indoors. We're thinking it'll be, um, real soon. So we're kind of, you know, hope, have our hopes on, on that. Um, there are also some other businesses on, specifically on Main Street, that are waiting for barricade. And, uh, the barricades have been ordered, it has to speak about this, but the barricades have been ordered and we're waiting on that. When that comes in, there'll be many more businesses that will be able to take over, uh, the sidewalk and parking area. Increase their dining area.
Thank you. Is that the four hundred blocks, Sam?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I was inquiring about. Okay. Great. And I see Barbara Voss. I don't know. Oh, Mr. Hensley.
The, the state has, um, allowed the salons to reopen. And we're waiting for the county to issue an order with their new protocols and consistent with what the state's allowed. And I'm not certain what the holdup is at the county, but, um, I've just checked again. I check the website pretty regularly. But there's not been a new order issued yet, but it's expected at any time. I'm not, again, I don't know if anyone else knows what the delay is, but they are authorized to allow it.
Thank you, City Attorney. Barbara Voss, did you want to weigh in on that or?
I was just going to say, um, I am kind of keeping an eye on businesses that have taken advantage of the, permits, encouragement permits, temporary use permits. And, um, most of the downtown are. I was surprised that Chef Honus hadn't, um, asked yet. But then I learned that he had actually made a request just a little later than the other businesses. Wendy's Cafe was one that I thought maybe they want, want, put a couple of tables outside. They're, they're only takeout right now. Um, so I may try to reach out to them. I will try to reach out to them.
You know what? I spoke, I, I, last I asked Neil a few, maybe a month ago, three weeks ago, whenever it first was allowed or a week after.
Yeah.
He said, he said they weren't ready to do that. And he was waiting to see how things played out. So, but I would highly encourage you to reach out to him again. Maybe, maybe he's changed his mind.
Okay.
Wendy's is, I, I specifically remember calling Wendy's the first weekend. And we had talked about having some dining area. He wasn't so interested in the front, but I think he was interested in the backside. But, uh, we certainly should reach out to them. Um, it's been a while. Reach out to them and see if they, if they have any additional needs.
Yeah, okay. I will.
And now we're, now that we're talking specifics, did Kigura, is Kigura going to be allowed to use those barricades and they come in as well? Would that work for them?
Yes, they are, they are one of the businesses, the whole row of those businesses are waiting for barricades.
Okay.
So, so Sam, you know, I know we're waiting on barricades, but is there a way for us to use, um, anything else? Like trucks or something to block the area? Like, do we have to wait for the barricades? Is, is there any other option? Because you said that the barricades are premium. You know, we could be waiting for a month for the barricades, and I just would hate for those businesses to close because we didn't find a different solution.
So I, I don't expect we have to wait very long. In fact, we expect the barricades to be available later part of the week. Uh, so I think we're in good shape.
Great. Well, it's good to hear everyone's so focused at the granular level and know the different businesses. That's, that's really encouraging. Thank you. Um, okay. Is there anything else on this item? I think it was just a, it was just a receive and file. So, uh, question is, do we have the council consensus to receive and file? I believe we do, right? Is anyone opposed? No, I don't think so. Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chuckling over there. I see you. Uh, okay. Item nine was pulled. And we are up to reports. City Clerk?
Yeah, just a quick mention that, um, this, this city clerk's office is in communication with the County of L.A. to obtain a ballot box, a permanent ballot box. Um, I met with, um, and with Elias with, um, Public Works. And we have determined a spot, but we are just waiting for the final agreement. And once we have it signed and it's in place, we will let you know. Just wanted to guys, to give you a little heads up on that. I, I don't want to say, I don't want to jinx it because we haven't officially signed the agreement. But if so, it would be placed in September and drop off would begin early October.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Clerk. All right. Uh, anyone on from the city treasurer? I don't think so. Scrolling through. Okay, no. All right. Reports, Councilmember Drew, you have an item under your name. You'd like to introduce it?
Uh, yes, I just kind of want to start a review of the, uh, council member liaison role to the citizen committees and the committee role itself. You know, I, I really like to try and get clarification on a couple of things. Number one is, what are our expectations of each, of each of the citizen boards? Now, how, how can we get them or give them better direction on what we need from them so that they can better advise us? And the second thing is, you know, what is the role of the city council liaison to these, to these committees? At, at this point in my first few months, um, I'm unsure if, if I'm a hindrance or a help to this overall process of these advisory committees. Um, having been on EDAC before coming on to council, um, you know, there, there were several of us who were frustrated by the lack of a plan. Like, we're there, we, we want to do work, uh, but we're not quite sure what we're supposed to be doing or how we're supposed to be going about it. Um, you know, as a council member for the first few months here, I've been, I've had the pleasure of being on the, uh, the Arts and Culture, uh, committee or liaison to that committee, and I've been to about four meetings. They are active, they're engaged, they're eager to help, they want to get things done. But I can also see a growing frustration and a disconnect between what we think their role is and what we believe, uh, or what they believe their role is. So if we can try to better qualify, uh, better clarify this, I believe we could channel the energy and the effort to what we need. Um, and the, and the work being done being given a greater value. And I'm talking about all, all these committees, not just that one. I just have a little bit more experience on that one so far. Um, as a liaison, I'm a little bit confused in my role during the meetings. Am I there to listen? Am I there to comment? Am I there to make suggestions? Uh, look, honestly, it's hard for me personally to sit in a meeting, uh, and not say anything. And that, that's a me problem, but, but this is true. Uh, I do feel that my being there is, is a bit of a double-edged sword at times. On one hand, they're free to bounce information or bounce ideas off a council member. But on the other hand, you know, how free are they to talk and say what they want while I'm there? You know, I want to be a value added to the process. So, uh, one of the things I like to, to propose or discuss is that we use the same protocols for all the citizen boards that we're using currently for the D E I Commission. Because on that one, there is a clear and defined set of goals for them to, uh, to look to achieve. Um, and I figure maybe this is something we could, we could update each year for each of these boards. Um, and also maybe discuss the, the possibility that, uh, for council to be in, involved in the meetings on, um, and as requested or as needed basis. And what I mean by that is, you know, the board that, or the citizen board that we're meeting with to have maybe a specific piece or part of a meeting dedicated, uh, to engaging whichever liaison is from the council is there for whatever purpose they need. And then once that is finished, um, the liaison would leave and they'd be able to conduct their business. So I just kind of wanted to open it up to, uh, the, the four of you. I, I know you've been through this longer than I have and, and try to get your comments.
Okay, I'll open up, thanks, Science. I'll open up the floor. Whoever would like to weigh in. Yeah, Councilmember Nickel.
Um, not that I'm a fan of more meetings, because I'm not. You know, when we have had joint EDAC council meetings, I've always found that that it's helpful. I, at least I think from the council member's perspective, it's very helpful. So I think that could be something that maybe we do, you know, bi-yearly, uh, with each CCB. You know, Lance, I, I shared your frustration, uh, my first year on council. You know, feeling like I was going to way too many meetings that I didn't say or do anything at, I just listened. And then it was really never a time for me to come back and report directly to my fellow council members on those, on those meetings. I mean, the concept is that you, like, we are there at those meetings so that we can hear what's going on and then we can bring it back and we can share with the other council members, so that not every council member has to be at every single committee, commission and board. Uh, but I do also understand, you know, your, your perspective on, you know, these CCBs. They're designed to kind of do a deep dive and do additional work for us, to then come back and make recommendations to council, for council to make, set policies, so on and so forth. But many of them don't have direct, direction from us, what our goal for them is. On, you know, the other side of that though, is many of them don't necessarily want our direction. They want some autonomy. Right? They want to be able to have a say, not just, you know, have our say or do our bidding. And so I feel like it is a, it's a balance. And I think each committee, commission and board is a little bit different. And, uh, you know, I don't really know what the answer is, but I think if each CCB had, even if it was just once a year, had FaceTime with all five of us at a joint meeting, that could potentially help. They could share what their yearly, their plan for the year is, and we could either nod our heads yes, like we agree, or no, we don't. Mark, uh, Mr. Hensley, I know you're listening. Uh, would there be any issues with the five council members all being at an agendized meeting, uh, with a CCB and interacting with them in a way to give them direction?
Uh, no, if, if you're going to interact with D two, agendizes a joint meeting, but that would just be a tacticality. I mean, just
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, that's not something that has to be filmed or recorded.
Have to take minutes and, but no, otherwise it's take minutes.
Yeah, and Scott, that's the same thing that Bill Fisher, when he was mayor instituted, you know, he was the first one to have that I, that I'm aware of. Had all five council members show up at the EDAC meeting, so it was publicly noticed. There was an agenda. Um, the whole posting process and everything else. So, um, okay, Councilor Purstuck.
And I know, um, Mayor, you had, you had an idea of actually bringing everybody together, all the CBBS at, once a year with the council members to get, kind of have a, a common understanding of where we're going for that given year with a focus so that they had a clear understanding of our goals and our expectations and that they could, you know, communicate to us what they're finding. Um, I know we have talked about doing something like that, and I, I'm definitely for something where we're all together kind of talking about what we can do as the city and what they can bring to the city. They also know that we had asked about having each of the CBBs present once a quarter. And we have not really been, um, obviously because of COVID, we haven't been, um, following that rule. But I really, really wanna get back to a point where each of the CBBs is presenting us, presenting to us once a quarter. Cause it's also important to know that, um, to give them a chance to, to present to the, to the council as well as let the public know that there are people beyond the council and beyond the staff that are working on their behalf. And, you know, give them an opportunity to, um, shine or, you know, present to the council. I think we just really need to get back to that and be a little more result, uh, a little more religious about having them come once a quarter and presenting their, what they've been working on to the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Prustak. I think Mr. Mittnick has an idea.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, we talked about this not that long ago and, um, as Councilmember Prustak just commented on, COVID nineteen's made it a little bit difficult. So starting on October sixth, uh, we will have, um, the committees, uh, report to the council. We're gonna do, it looks like right now on the schedule anyhow, environmental committee as well as the senior housing board, uh, will have an update. So committees will start coming to you on a regular basis, at least once a month, we'll have at least one. Uh, where they come to you, give you a, a summary of what they've done over the past year and then talk about the year coming up. So at that point in time, the five of you could weigh in and give them some direction or answer questions, talk about parameters. And that will help you ensure that your, that your committees, commissions and boards are staying on the same page. Now, there are some commissions like the planning commission where their, their task is very clear in state law, what they do and so on. But mostly others would definitely benefit from having this format. So October sixth, we will start delivering for you.
Scott, one other thing is, uh, for two ideas, one that Carol talked about was an idea from several years ago, which is that getting a chair and co-chair at the very least of every, every CCB together with the council and brainstorming as we prepare for strategic, strategic planning. The other idea was that we've said now for several years that the CCB should influence our strategic planning process. And if they know what our strategic plan was from last year and they have their own ideas about what they wanna achieve, they could be bringing forth recommendations to us that we consider as part of the strategic planning. So the environmental committee as an example did that because I was a liaison and said, I put, you know, I strongly encourage them to do that. If you wanna be heard, get your ideas heard, this is the venue to do that. I think we need to formalize that process. And just make it part of the annual process. And I agree with Lance, we should tighten up the charters, the objectives. I would say that the two organizations that are probably most well-defined are three, are the DEI, the CCB and the technology committee, which are all the three most recent additions to our CCBs. And that's because they're so fresh, but, uh, we haven't even Rexon Park Commission. Like I, I've, you know, I've been at some of those meetings, I don't know what we expect them to do outside of some of the regular things that they've been doing, like in fields and other things. So I do believe we should tighten that up. I do agree that it's, the role can be a little ambiguous at times and we all attend meetings. And for the public's awareness, we don't just attend the meetings that are internal to El Segundo. We also attend, all of us attend external meetings representing the city in regional affairs with different committees, commissions, districts, boards, et cetera. So I would support, I believe less is more. I do think that we do get in the way a little bit sometime. I would counter that by saying that we're gonna do that and step away a little bit on a formal basis. Scott Mittnick, we need to make sure that the staff, that we've got the right staff assigned to those CCBs and that the CCB knows that this is your staff liaison, they're there to help you get things done. And then to Lance's point, if they have an issue, then maybe a council member is there or they escalate it however. But yeah, I concur. I think it's, I like the idea. And, uh, yeah, Lance, please.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm not suggesting that we, that like there's no liaison. I'm just saying, I, I think maybe leave it up. I, I like the chair and co-chair idea a lot because that helps kinda formalize each, each committee. Um, and then have them say, okay, we got a meeting coming up, uh, you know, arts and culture, council member Drew, you're a liaison. You know, we're gonna, we wanna talk to you for twenty minutes about this. Um, I think that might help out. And then, cause the last meeting I had with them was like that. They had something. I did it, we talked, and then they went around table afterwards for an hour and probably got a lot more done that way without me necessarily being there. But I'm not saying completely step away, I'm just kinda saying be there, but be out of the way if that makes any sense.
Yeah. Would you say the meetings would be, who was that chiming? Was that the city attorney? Or was that you, Scott?
I'm sorry, it was me. I'll be quiet.
No, no, it's okay. Go ahead. Feel free, please.
I was gonna say, uh, in, in terms of rolling in the committee's, uh, recommendations with the strategic plan, uh, absolutely. And we ended up doing that with the environmental committee. Do you remember at the, sort of the last minute, the, the chair of the committee had articulated some concerns and we reacted pretty swiftly and we rolled that in. We can do that through the staff to those committees, whereas as their meetings during the year and they set their objectives for the year, we can make sure that their, uh, recommendations get woven into the strategic planning process. Uh, you could do that with a big meeting that you talked about with the council and the chairs. But, um, I, I think it might be more efficient and effective and efficacious that if we just do it through the staff. So we work directly with the committees and roll their items in. And, um, well, yeah, we could do it that way. Um, I'm, I'm happy to fine tune it as we go forward, but we, we hear what you want to achieve.
Well, I wanna clarify one thing. Actually, we'll go to Councilmember Prustak first.
I just think it's important that we have, um, the chairs and the co-chairs meet with the council. Because we need to give them FaceTime because they are giving their time to the city. And I, I know we did it, um, a couple of times in the past where we had, um, we did the, uh, where we had the, each of the, the committees there with the co-chairs, um, where we did the, um, with the, what's his, uh, one of the guy from the technology committee, uh, hosted it and we, we, we It was a very good meeting and it was a, we really learned a lot and we really kind of became aligned in our, our message in as well as our direction. And I think it's important that we re-continue to do that.
Yeah, I agree. I think we got, now we got a great strategic, strategic plan. We could do a facilitated session like Carol's suggesting to get alignment across all of our CCBs. Because how many of our CC, CCV members really know the finer points of our strategic plan? Probably not that many. So I think that's a great idea. I wanna clarify one point though. So are we saying that the council, the liaisons, council member liaisons still attend the meetings or they attend the meetings? I thought your ideal answer is you attend the meetings when you're requested to be there. Is that correct? All right, uh, Mayor Proton, you haven't said much on this topic yet, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Uh, I, I, I think that for the cit, my, my two cents on this, per the city attorney, or excuse me, the city manager, having them cycle through, given that each of these boards and commissions is different and their charter is slightly different, that perhaps it's a good time to revisit each one and decide what the level of involvement needs to be. Uh, some of them have very little window into what the city does and that liaison role can be very powerful. Sometimes like with the old, the, the golf course committee, we just had to have someone there because money was being attached. So we needed to have someone there to look at that and sign off on things and vote. Uh, so I think each of these is slightly different and I think as we go through, we can decide which ones we are additive to, which ones we need to be at, or which ones, you know, like the tech committee where someone like me would just get in the way. You know, I, I think that, that it might be an opportunity to revisit those, but I think it's a, I, I really applaud Councilmember Drew for giving us a fresh look at.
Okay, so Scott, you have enough to, to come back to us with some
I do.
Points.
Okay. I, I, I do, a lot, lots to digest. Um, definitely we'll do that and we'll start having the first two come to you on October sixth with an update and clarification for their role going forward.
All right. I think we're done on that one. That's great. Thank you. All right, City Attorney. Mark?
Sorry, I'm learning how to
Are you sure you're not napping?
No, I'm not. I'm learning to manipulate a couple of screens at the same time.
Skipping all us.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I am learning to multi-screen so I can watch and, and read these anyway. Um, anyway, thank you. No, I have nothing to add this evening.
Good, great. Thank you, sir. Uh, you know what? I'm sorry, folks. I skipped right over the council members because I was lost in the text of, um, Councilmember Drew's item. So, all right, we'll go back up to Councilmember Nickel, reports for this evening. My apologies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, um, commend the school and all the teachers for doing the best they can to roll out, uh, you know, hybrid and distance learning. Uh, I think stress levels amongst parents, teachers, staff, everyone is, uh, is higher than it ever should be in life. And I just, uh, I hope that everyone is just taking a pause, taking a breath, getting through it. Um, you know, banging our heads against the wall is not gonna solve the problem, uh, and we are all in this together. So, uh, I just wanna thank all of those double working parents that are doubling as, uh, teachers. I, I wanna thank my wife personally for not killing my children in the past five days. Um, and, uh, I wanna thank our internet so far for not failing us miserably. So that's what I got, Mr. Boils.
Thank you, Councilmember Nickel. Nice sentiment. Councilmember Prustak.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody about the run for education, um, for the PPAs. It, it finishes this week, it's still time, time to sign up. Um, it's a great event out, great way to get out with your kids and walk the streets. And I also wanna give once again a shout out to SNS Hardware and the Swanson family for recognizing the service of our employees and doing and bringing a, um, in and out truck in honor of the night, the people who helped, um, and sacrificed their lives on nine eleven.
Thank you, Councilmember Prustak. Mayor Proton?
Just a few items. There will be a housing forum later this week, uh, talk about housing innovation. Uh, that will change as a, as the, thematically, things out of Sacramento have not come to fruition. But some of the subject matter of how municipalities can adapt to some of these laws will go through. And that's being sponsored by BizFed and the LA County Chamber. Um, continue, I would like to continue to warn residents to be mindful of the water rate pricing, uh, structure that's gonna go forward and to be attended to that. What our limitations are as a city as we go forward with that, as we have to set pricing structure. That meeting, I believe, will take place on the fifteenth. Um, and I think it's important that people pay attention to that. Uh, because this is one of those things that we talk all the time in the city about philosophical elements. This is where things really hit you in the pocketbook. And then lastly, I know the city clerk talked about the ballot box being dropped off. Uh, absentee ballots are gonna be out soon and there's gonna be a lot of things on them that I don't think we're all particularly well-versed in, especially some of the propositions, proposition fifteen, proposition nineteen, both of which are so dense in their subtext that I've attended two separate meetings for regional bodies that looked at them and said, we can't even make an opinion yet. We need to evaluate what we're looking at. But proposition nineteen is a funding structure on, on property tax appraisals that have so many carve-outs for where that money goes, it's really difficult to form an opinion. So I would caution all our, our viewers out there, residents, that your ballot will be here soon and you're gonna get a lot of information on these things from people who are for or against them. And to make sure you read both sides and really understand what you're voting for or against. The proposition fifteen is a split role property tax, which would carve out commercial properties from the Prop thirteen tax exemptions. There's a lot of people who at first that looks attractive to, I would caution you to look with a fine print of how those machinations would work and what some of the exemptions are. So that is the report from the, uh, from the Sacramento beat and the water utility beat of the week. Uh, and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Pimentel, well, we're not done with Sacramento yet. Last year, you might remember that there was a bill called SB fifty by Senator, uh, California State Senator Scott Weiner out of San Francisco. That bill was gonna allow ministerial approval, meaning cities could not deny housing requests within so many yards or feet of mass transit. It was a really contentious bill. It barely died. And shortly thereafter, we were at a legislative break, legislative breakfast and Senator Ben Allen and some of the other people that were there said, I'm telling you right now, they're gonna be more coming, just prepare yourself. And sure enough, there were something like nine housing bills in the docket. We, there, there's been so much activity that, uh, we don't even know yet which ones have passed, um, or failed. We're still digesting all the information. They went super late and, um, it's kind of an unprecedented session. Some of the bills that we took positions on were SB fifty-four, which is related to single-use plastic and our environmental uh, component of the legislative platform that failed. Uh, SB thirteen eighty-three, we opposed it in the past and that was, um, gives twelve weeks of family leave. AB six eighty-five, uh, we opposed and it passed. And that has very onerous COVID reporting requirements that are gonna make it really difficult for employers, including the city. But the good news is that SB eleven twenty, which was probably the most difficult for cities bill, the most egregious attack on local control, which would have allowed parcels to be split into at least two, possibly even four parcels on one existing R one lot with ADUs. So imagine if you had a single-family home lot in El Segundo and developers were allowed to split that in four and there's nothing the city could do about it. That was what was at stake. There was a full court, uh, press effort. We had, um, Bill Brand out of Redondo Beach, who's been a really adamant opponent to housing mandates that are not funded and degrade local control. There were representatives at, uh, city levels across California that we were on phone calls with and that one failed. So that's good news there. And the thing that's, I think, we wanna get across is that there isn't one size fits all and that cities should have the ability to dictate their own housing. And, you know, if you look at El Segundo, I think I've said this before on the dais, but we, we're told that we're not very dense. Redondo Beach, most of them are dense. We actually have almost seventeen thousand people in a little over one square mile. That's incredibly dense. And then we're surrounded by four square miles of arguably the most economically important square miles in all of Southern California. So our point has been to impress upon legislators that we're different. Ninety-eight percent of our tax revenue comes from commerce, not housing. There's no financial incentive for us to add housing unless we can, we really believe like it is something that our businesses need and we're starting to feel that way. And just so you all know, we're studying where we could put more housing density in El Segundo. We already, this council, all five of us approved that. But we're gonna do it on our own terms. We're not gonna do it on mandates. But anyway, SB eleven twenty or something like it will certainly rear its head again. So we just have to be vigilant. And I think that the action we took to support the city of Torrance's effort in terms of a coalition for local control, I think that was really prudent on our part tonight. And, uh, that's all I have on that with, uh, regards to that. And let's see, I'm looking back at the agenda. City Manager, back to you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we will follow up as indicated on the items, uh, before. The next council meeting, two weeks from tonight, September fifteenth, it'll primarily be budget night. We will have the, um, uh, the final presentation of the budget to the city council that incorporates all the revisions um, that we were directed to do so. And part of that process will have a few, uh, different components or different, um, agenda items that tie to it. For example, there was talk earlier about the gateway sign. So, um, um, you, we will have, um, that project will be presented to the council, or at least an update on that project. And then the, the fund, the revised funding recommendations for the art and public places, um, monies, that will be uh, in front of the council, the art and, um, culture committee did meet and they have some, um, they have a, a recommended package for you on that. We will also have a quasi-study session update on the park place funding um, effort to do the, that large capital project, the large, um, transportation project. The master fee schedule, that's, that'll be in front of you too, the annual master fee schedule. We do that through the budget process. Then some necessary implementation steps with the reorganization, the shuffling around to departments and we'll have some, um, documents associated with that to get that, that moving. So primarily, uh, budget night on the fifteenth. And then finally, one last parting comment, uh, for Meredith Pettit, who, um, is, is leaving. Uh, Meredith, if you're still watching, you are awesome and you will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
All right, before I adjourn, I just wanna thank council members and staff for a really productive evening, great dialogue. Thank you all for tuning in. Our residents, we are officially adjourned at eight twenty-nine PM. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bye.